Okay, good afternoon to everybody. This is the April 24th special call meeting and work session for the Board of Commissioners, and on behalf of the Board, I deeply apologize for the late start of this. But we had some really, really important issues this morning, both in the gender prep, the executive session that, as people are finding out, I believe, and let's make sure we have everything out on the table, and we don't make a vote until it's all the informed decision material is there. And I think that what we did today reflected that, but the price you pay is it just takes longer. But at least everybody knows where all the cards are, and when we make a decision now, you know how we all stand. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and go to tab one. And we're going to cover tabs one to four today, this afternoon, and then the rest of them will be covered tomorrow night at our Tuesday, April 25th evening meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM. So at this work session, there'll be no motions, no votes, and we're only considering information as it is presented, okay? So with that, let's go to tab one, where we have Mr. Wilgus. I believe you have the first one up on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Last fall, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety gave us a grant to do a safety video geared toward fourth graders, and that video was put together between us and the Safety Village. So I would like Eric Meyer from DOT and Allison Carter from the Safety Village, and as well as Aries, to show you the video that they put together with our grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Thank you, sir.
And Department of Health helped as well. So yeah, let's go ahead, and it's for fourth graders, but I hope you'll get a kick out of it. We had fun working on it.
I'm Pete Street. I'm going to talk to your ears about walking with your feet, so you don't get hit and go splat on a busy street. Listen to these four safety tips from your pal Pete to stay safe from automobiles when walking with your feet. Tip one: Pay attention and be visible. Do you walk, bounce, or roll? How do you safely get to where you're trying to go? When you're walking near a street, don't play. Pay attention, be visible, and put your phone away. Lots of walkers get injured by cars and trucks every day. Look up and be aware of your surroundings in every way. No texting, no headphones, no fooling around. Pay attention to arrive safe and sound. Tip two: Use a sidewalk or path, or if you must, walk facing traffic. If you come across a place without any sidewalk space, here, it's important to walk with your feet facing traffic on the left side of the street. Walk in a single file line on the far-left curb or edge, so drivers can see you without splish-splashing over the ledge. Tip three: Look left, right, left, right, until it's clear. Cross in places free of obstructions. No parked cars, bushes, or discarded couch cushions. Look left to right, and left to right again. Before you begin, what do you see? A car? A bus? A granny riding a motorcycle at supersonic speed? Wait until the way is finally clear. Then, you may cross safely, my dear. Tip four: Wait for "walk" to cross safely at intersections. When crossing an intersection, make sure you're ready. Look across the street, but keep your two feet steady. The crosswalk is where drivers expect you to be, to help you avoid the crazy taxi cab-driving zombie. Push the button for walking protection. Then wait for "walk" to cross the intersection. Most injuries happen halfway through, so stay focused, and be patient, too. Next time your feet are near a street, remember these four tips from your friend Pete. One: Pay attention and always be visible. Two: Use a sidewalk or path, or if you must, walk facing traffic. Three: Look left, right, left, right, until it's clear. Four: Wait for "walk" to cross safely at intersections. To be a safe walker near every street, think with your head, and walk with your feet.
Every fourth grader in Cobb County wants to see the video of looking forward to that. Hopefully, learning a thing or other. Oh, do you want to touch on the kids who are going to come through?
Yes. Good afternoon. So the video, we are going to include that with all of our fourth graders in the lunchroom. They're going to watch that video while they're having lunch. And then, part of the grant, we added three questions with regards to pedestrian safety to our pre-test and post-test, and so we are going to be able to acknowledge whether they've learned that message or not through the pre and the post-test, so.
How many fourth graders did you get last year, roughly?
We roughly have about 9,500 that come through, and then roughly about 11,000 second graders.
Okay.
So second graders will be provided. The Clifford Takes a Walk book, this was a book that was specifically designed that Safe Kids and Scholastic went together, and so we have received 8,000 of those books, and we are going to pass those out to all of our second grade students as well. So both grades will get instruction.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate all the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, tab two. I think that's Mr. Johnson, right? You have a couple items?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I hope all is going well. I was asked to come forward and bring forth a presentation on affordable housing, to just try to educate people about the issue of affordable housing and kind of how Cobb and the region are faring in regard to this particular topic. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go into a little bit of definition about what affordable housing is, kind of talk about the difference between affordability and affordable housing, go over some of the common analyses used to evaluate communities, and then talk about some best practices that exist around the nation. So what is affordable housing? Affordable housing is really, comes down to one simple term from an analytical perspective: housing that costs no more than 30% of an household's median gross income, monthly gross income. When you start talking about income, obviously, you often also think about how do you define low income? Because a lot of times affordability, there's two ways that affordable housing is influenced. It's influenced by where you live and the cost of housing, and it's also impacted by a particular family's income. So for people with a housing urban development, say that a person of low income is a person who makes 50% to 80% of the area median income. So these two definitions will come into play as we go through the rest of the presentation, but I wanted to kind of put those out there as beginning pieces that colors kind of how we're talking about the rest of what we're going to be looking at in this presentation. When we look at what does that 50% to 80% of median income mean here in metropolitan Atlanta? If I am a family of four, and I make less than $54,000 a year, then I am considered by HUD to be a low-income family. Obviously, based upon your family's size, that differentiates the number, because the more people in the family, the higher average income is necessary to support that particular family. I mean, there are 2016 numbers. These numbers will be updated in this particular year, but they have not been released yet by HUDs. We don't have the 2017 numbers, which impacts our CDBG program. When we talk about affordable housing, what does it include? When you're talking about rental housing, it includes your rent and all the utilities that go towards your rent. If you're in ownership, you're talking about everything that it costs in order to maintain that home: mortgage, property taxes, insurances, utility costs, all of those. So it's a very different figure between the rental and the homeowners as it relates to how do you define what affordability is, because of the costs that go into play when you're trying to determine what affordability is for that particular individual. As we get more into the distinction between what is affordability and what is affordable housing, affordable housing is really housing for your poorest of populations, peoples of lowest income. Again, this is income, 80% or lower of the area median income. Mostly, this is housing that is used, that is supported in some mechanism through government programs, whether that be housing vouchers, or other types of public housing, or other particular mechanisms that local government can utilize to help subsidize the cost of housing for people in the community. Housing affordability is a different issue. Housing affordability really deals with market rates. What is the market rate that the private sector is providing for a particular housing market? And what are the people's incomes of that particular area in order to afford that particular home? That's the issue of housing affordability. We try to, the best mechanism to determine housing affordability is what's called cost-burden analysis. Cost-burden analysis is analysis of how much a household income is versus the average housing cost of the particular area. I'm now going to start getting into a lot of data and data analysis, and before I start this, I want to note that this information, most of this information came from the Atlanta Regional Commission. Some of this data did come from our comprehensive plan update, which is happening right now. But when it comes, and also you'll notice that this information is provided from a regional scale as well as a local scale. And the reason that is, is because affordable housing is greater than a local issue. No one government or municipality is going to be able to tackle the issue of affordability on their own, because people cross political boundaries. So it's a regional and a national issue, and I just want to make sure that's clear, because it sometimes gets confused if one government can't solve the whole puzzle, is what I'm trying to say. I'm talking about the cost-burden analysis. You'll see here, the darker bar is the areas that are not cost-burdened. That means those particular areas have that percentage of the population where 30% or less of their income is going towards housing. The best two counties in the metro Atlanta region are Forsyth and Fayette, at 70-plus percent. Cobb County is kind of in the middle of the pack, at 66.8%, as it relates to the percentage of people who are cost-burdened. Or people who are not cost-burdened, excuse me, let me rephrase that. Kind of looking at the cost of housing as a percentage of overall income, I'm showing here, the darker areas are the areas where you have a higher proportion of the population, where a larger percentage of income is going towards housing. And then next to that, you'll see kind of the metro Atlanta, metro Atlanta numbers in regard to that. Again, this is housing cost as a percentage of income, so the areas where have a higher housing cost is going to be the darker the color.
So you're telling me that in West Cobb and East Cobb, trying to make sure I get the right color here...
Between 31% to 50% of housing cost as a percentage of income.
So they're above the ratio, above the definition of affordable housing?
That is what this is saying. I will make a caveat to this. These are not my numbers. These are numbers from the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not accusing you.
No, I understand, because there was...
But you get my point. The perception is that people who live in East and West Cobb, all right? Now you're telling me they're house poor.
You will see more slides coming up later on that provide many different views of this particular issue. Many different views of this particular issue. Those individuals probably have higher income, possibly, it depends on how many people are working in the households. There's lots of factors that go into this, and that's why looking at one slide is not going to tell you the whole picture. But this is what this particular dataset showed. Some people think that a better view of affordability deals with when you combine household, housing, and transportation together, because it's great if you have an area where housing is more affordable, but do you have the transportation access and transportation costs that go along with that? Before we show you the combination of that, this shows transportation cost as a percentage of income. Anything in the darker color is the, the orange color is 11 to 20%, the darker red color is 21 to, 21% and up. So this is kind of, this kind of makes sense. The farther away you are from the highways, the higher your transportation costs are, as it relates to gas, maintenance of your vehicle, things of that nature. So that's pretty intuitive, intuitive concept in that particular map, and that shows out regionally. You could kind of follow where the interstates are, and you see how they flow through with transportation costs. When you combine them together, housing and transportation costs as a percentage of income, this is how it kind of alters that framework a little bit. Compared to the housing cost alone, you'll see that the areas along 75 become a little bit, become in better focus, because the transportation costs are so much lower when you combine them together.
Let me talk about a narrative that's sort of like not what we think. This is it, right here. So if you ever had an argument as to why you wanted to address issues involving, you know, regional transportation, this chart would argue for that, or some kind of approach involving Paulding County and Cherokee and Bartow. Interesting. Thank you.
Our next dataset talks about median home values, and these are, like everything else, has been distributed by Census Track. So this shows where the higher, where the median home price is higher, kind of in Cobb County, and then where the median rent price is higher in Cobb County. Again, where most of this conversation, again, is about income and housing costs, because that's the areas that impact affordability for individuals. I'll just give you a second to digest that. This shouldn't be a large surprise to anybody as far as, as far as the housing cost. Smyrna has shown a remarkable increase in their housing costs over the last 10 to 20 This was based on, hold on one second. This was, this was 2014 census data. This is a percentage integer chart showing the home value as an integer compared to median That's correct. So let's say you had a $20,000 home, and you have an annual household income of $50,000. Your integer would be at about two in cases like that, well, four in cases like that, excuse me, four. So this is showing kind of that comparison as, from an integer perspective, of cost versus, home value versus income for the area.
So the darker, the higher the...
Generally speaking, it has, the number that will, that will impact that more is going to be the housing cost number, because it's the beginning of the integer. Not to get into statistics too much. Yes, ma'am. So if you either have an area that has a higher, higher value for the home, or an area that has a, a large concentration of people with lesser income, either one of those two numbers can impact the integer. This particular slide looks at median home sales price by zip code between 2014 and 2016, and this shows it kind of regionally, so you see where, really, this tells you where the hot markets are. And this impacts affordability, because if your home price is going up, it impacts affordability for those trying to enter the market. In this particular slide, the darker the color, the higher the median home sales price. Actually, I think that's Buckhead. Yes, the very dark color is Buckhead. Looking at the opposite side, this is with negative equity. This deals with people who, because of the Great Recession, many people remember that housing prices declined substantially during the Great Recession. An individual who is kind of underwater in their mortgage, that's called negative equity, where they owe more on their home than their home is currently worth. This particular slide shows by zip code in 2016, the number of homes that are still in negative equity. The blue is better in this particular slide. The blue shows 0 to 1,000 households that have a negative equity. So then from there, it goes to the gray, the orange, and then the red. The red are the areas that have the highest number in negative equity, which is 3,000 and up.
Chairman, if I may ask a question?
Sure.
There was some action that was being considered with respect to the recession and homes that were underwater. Has that moved forward? Is that just water under the bridge at this point?
Water under the bridge.
No pun intended.
Can I laugh anyway?
I'm just curious. I don't want to be too open, but I know we were talking about this maybe three or four years ago. What's the status of that? Is that still in progress, or are we not moving forward with...
We haven't had an update on that, David, in a long time. It's probably been about a year and a half. Remember, we had the outside council?
Yes. Deborah Knight, no.
Follow up on that?
Yes, sir.
Please. Make sure we all get that in.
Be happy to. I'm just putting a note down real quick. And finally, we look at the numbers. Where are your number of individuals where their housing is subsidized in some capacity by housing and urban development, vouchers, or other types of income, of housing subsidies? This one shows the darker the area, the higher the number of subsidized housing units in that particular area. So for instance, kind of the lightest color would have 0 to 25 subsidized housing units, whereas the darkest color would have 150 to 1,250 subsidized housing units in that area.
It would be great to see a map over the last 10 years of how this, how this map has changed. Is that possible?
I can reach out to the Atlanta Regional Commission to see what kind of year-to-year data they have, or what kind of historical data they have on this, and see if we can put that together.
Yeah, like, you know, four or five, the same chart, but four or five on the same page, so we could just do a, you know, visual comparison to see how things are tracking?
Stephen White in the Tax Assessor's Office has not all these individual breakdowns, but he does have the increase in fair market value and then prices for Cobb.
Yeah.
Because he's done those already.
I think my guess is we're doing better, but I, I'm just a guess because of what I've seen.
Well, the subsidized housing units has more to do with the number of vouchers that are being provided by, but it's important to note, too, that vouchers are transportable. That means that if I may have a voucher from Cobb County, but I may live in Cherokee County or Paulding County or Bartow County, and that's okay, because once a voucher is provided, then you are able to go anywhere with that particular voucher.
So even though you might get the voucher in a Cobb zip code, you would reflect on this map, is that zip code, where you could take that voucher somewhere else?
So we're just, we're just showing the number of individuals that have a voucher within Cobb County. That might not be our voucher, is what I'm saying. It might not be a voucher given out by our CDBG office, or by Meredith Housing Authority. It could be a voucher from another municipality or another jurisdiction, where, because once you have that voucher, you have free to go wherever you wish to go, wherever you can find affordable units to meet your needs.
But nonetheless, this still reflects how many houses in Cobb are subsidized.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I'd just like to get a trend in. Of course, yes. You know, I just, I'm just curious. My guess is it's gotten better. I'm just curious if that's the case.
The, it's, it's hard to say gotten better or not, because, because it's not, because a voucher is not location-specific, it's hard to know if the situation has gotten better or worse because of the transferability of each particular voucher. Does that make sense?
Well, it doesn't matter, because I said, I think it's getting better, so that's all that matters.
I can't statistically show that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, of course, I get it. I'm just curious.
Subsidy is not, I'm sorry, Chairman, I know you're continuing.
No, go ahead.
The subsidy is not just vouchers. I believe that, does this include other subsidies as well?
It does. It does. That's the main type of subsidized housing that goes through HUD, but there is other types of subsidies.
That could be location-specific.
Like, for instance, the Meredith Housing Authority has a number of senior facilities that are geared towards our aging population of lesser income. Those are fixed base areas. You can't, you can't be within that and then transfer that to another area, because that's a location-specific subsidy. So we start now drilling down from the federal government down to the local, as far as what type of resources are out there to help with affordable housing issues. HUD basically, like many things, they put things into buckets, and these buckets of funding come down to areas that receive HUD funds into four basic buckets. Those that help ownership base with rehab, those that deal with tenant-based assistance, down payment assistance for new home buyers, and then the acquisition of, or construction of new affordable housing units. They put that money in these big buckets, and then it kind of gets passed down to the state. I'm not going to go through this entire list, but this is a list of all of the programs that the Department of Community Affairs has for affordable housing assistance. They take those four buckets that HUD has, and they split it up into these 12, 15 different programs that address different types of issues for different types of populations as it relates to affordable housing. So this could be everything from housing tax credit programs, to bonds to help construct new affordable housing, to even a search engine where an individual who is looking for affordable housing can find out where in the region, or where in the state, different affordable housing options are available for people who are looking for housing. So I'm not, again, I'm not going to go through this entire program, but I wanted to put these out there, so you saw that the state of Georgia is very involved in the issue of affordable housing through the Department of Community Affairs, and most of this is funded through our HUD funds. The last thing that I was asked to provide were what are some of the local practices that other local governments utilize, other than HUD funds, to help with the issue of affordable housing? And from our research, we were able to find eight main programs that different jurisdictions have used for addressing the issue of affordable housing. One of them is inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning is a concept where, as new rental properties are being authorized through zoning actions by the Board of Commissioners, that a certain number of the units is set aside for affordable housing. That's what the concept of affordable housing is. Usually, inclusionary zoning is done in collaboration with a housing trust fund, where if a developer is not able, or is unwilling to add those affordable units, that they then, kind of like our sidewalk fund or our tree fund, where if they can't provide the sidewalks required, they pay to go into a sidewalk fund, and that's, those sidewalks can be done other ways. Many local communities have used the housing trust fund in a similar manner, where if they can't meet their inclusionary housing targets, then they go ahead and they pay into the housing trust fund, and the government can then use that particular money in different areas to help address the issue of affordable housing, either through construction of new affordable housing units with other partners, or through using that money to, to secure affordable housing areas and new developments that are happening. Some communities use an expedited permitting process to use the time it takes to build affordable housing products. Some use density bonuses, where if, say, you want to include affordable housing in your particular unit, in your particular portfolio, let's say, instead of that housing development going in at 12 units per acre, it's able to go in at 15 units per acre, but those additional units per acre have to be set aside for a certain number of years for affordable housing. Some, some use property tax incentives, where they provide tax incentives through, through their housing authority or through their development authority in order to help offset the cost for affordable housing units. Some use tax incremental financing in Georgia, known as tax allocation districts, as a way to induce affordable housing. And then some use impact fees and parking incentives. Parking incentives are really only best utilized in areas that have high-capacity transit, because you need to offset the parking requirements in areas where transit's available.
Dana, I thought in Georgia we didn't have impact fees.
In Cobb County, we don't have impact fees.
So we can have them, we could have them if we want.
Other areas in Georgia do have impact fees.
Municipalities have it as well, correct?
Some do.
In this county?
Yes, some do. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions the board may has, and if I can't answer your question, since I'm not, I am not an expert in this field, I'll certainly get with the people who are in order to get your question answered.
I'd like you to send me a list of 13 different programs for housing for the homeless. All right, you listed here. I can see who they all are.
Sure.
Because I'm telling you right now, if I have a particular case I've been trying to find, and it's just, they're not connected. I mean, I don't even know how these homeless people find places to live, because if I had the county chairman, can't get a straight answer, I don't know how they get a straight answer. All I can see is lots of people being in these programs, being paid certain sums of money for their salaries, but I can't get a simple answer as to someone that's got a family with four kids, they're being driven into the forest, and all I get is, well, go to these websites. So I want to know who these 13 programs are, okay?
I will do my best.
And who's here from Public Safety? Come on up, please, chief. First, I have one question. I'm going back to the household income limits, I think it was your first slide. Yeah, well, yeah, the fire, that's fine, okay. What is the income salary for our entry-level policeman or fireman?
Approximately $39,000 to $40,000.
Thirty-nine to forty. How about fire? Same thing?
We're at thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
And we go to thirty-five.
All right, so for Destiny, your people are already part of the low-income. They're community, they're county staff, and they're already classified as low-income by your presentation, right, Dana?
Yes, I'm trying to get that slide up for you.
Yeah.
Again, it depends on the number of individuals in the household, but if you have a four-person family, and an entry-level police officer, if that is the person, the only person who is, has income for that particular family, then they would be classified as low-income under the CDBG rules.
So if we have a brand-new employee in this county, one for sure, one employee for sure, one department is already low-income, and the other two departments are right on the cusp of being low-income. Will that change with the pay study?
The numbers I gave you, sir, are ready.
Pay study?
Based on the pay study.
Okay, how about you, chief?
The numbers I also gave should be based on the pay study.
Okay.
I don't really see that changing.
All right, and same thing. So we need to do better for your people. Okay, I just want to make a point. That was a great slide, and it's a great argument about, you know, people who run into burning fires, who respond to our 911 calls, who take care of us at 2:00 in the morning, and they're low-income people for practical purposes, if they're single and don't have a family. I don't understand why it makes a difference if you have two people, why at 43, if you only have a, you know, if you're a single-income family and you have three people to feed now, I don't understand why that slide changes. I guess they're assuming that both people work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate you letting me know that. This presentation alone has brought forth why we need to do better for our people. So thank you for your openness on that. Great presentation, Dana, thank you.
I would say even piggybacking off your data, Chairman, we have some employees who we just brought to the minimum wage or not far above it.
Right.
And, you know, if you look at their income levels, even if we had two people working at those levels, they're still going to be between, you know, extremely low and low.
Absolutely.
And I'd be very curious to know what the percentage is of all of our Cobb employees who are falling into this.
Yeah, is Tony out there? Tony Hagler? You knew I was going to ask that question? All right, I'll grab him later.
I'll be happy to get one.
Yeah. All right, but that's a great presentation. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you, Dana, I appreciate it. And then you have one more item on here, right?
Yes, sir, I'm just writing a note down from your last bear direction you provided. Yes, sir. Item number two deals with our April and May round of code amendments, and just wanted to go through and give you a brief presentation on what will be considered in this particular round, sir. All of the code amendments that are being brought forward are being brought forward by staff. These are staff from the Fire Marshal's Office, as well as the Water Department, and Public Health, the three areas that provided amendments. The first one deals with 54-50, and these really just amend the penalties for violation to go from the article to the chapter. An article is a much larger area of the code. This makes sure that covers all areas of Chapter 54. So it's kind of a cleanup code amendment. Item number two is 54-51. This deals with the life safety certificate of occupancy requirements, and this is to clarify what approved plans are required for different types of construction and renovation by the Fire Marshal prior to commencement of those particular construction activity.
Dana, are we still at the 50% threshold, like on renovations? Where less than 50%, they're grandfathered on the existing code except for the actual changes, whereas if you go over 50%, Jay probably has to answer this.
That, I think that deals with more the building code. I'm not sure that deals with life safety code.
No, it deals with life safety.
But I think Jay would be the best person to answer that, and he can correct me if that's...
Jay, you know what I'm asking?
Yes, if the renovations or improvements to the structure exceed the tax-assessed value, and it has to come up to new code.
So it's tax assessed, so it's not 50% of the value, it's the whole value?
But tax-assessed value is 40% of the fair market value.
Okay, all right, so 40%, all right. And then that way, then, for example, the Fire Marshal can come in, and if there's not any, like the ground fault receptiles, for example, they could go through the entire structure and say you have to replace them.
That would be under the electrical department, but that is a good example, yes.
Okay, all right. And that would hold true for sprinklers then, too?
And fire alarm, yes.
Right, okay, all right.
The next area is 54-102. This is adding a section to clarify the intent of this section. This is under the prohibited acts area, and it really, it deals with work on a fire alarm system and how it could be silenced or reset, requiring a fire action plan as regard to that. 54-96 is the fire protection systems, testing, and maintenance requirements. Really, this one is just, I think I'm off on my slides here. This one is just really eliminating some duplicate requirements. There are some duplicity in the code. We're just removing the duplicative code and making sure it's only located in one area. That's really just a clarification to help make it easier for individuals. 54-104. This deals with the powers and duties of the Fire Marshal and the delegation of their particular authority. This particular code, really, what's happening here is a Fire Marshal is trying to have it where their current practices are being properly shown in the particular code amendments.
What was the number on that one?
54-104.
I don't see that in my book. Do you have it? Oh, here you go, I'm sorry. I got it now, okay. Thanks, sorry about that. So it seems to me this is pretty widespread. The powers you're giving the Fire Marshal here, all right? The Fire Marshal may in his discretion promulgate such rules and regulations he deems necessary to effectuate the provisions of this article?
And, Mr. Chairman, that was actually, remember I said I had an offline discussion this morning?
Yeah.
That was the one that I asked about. Basically, some of the issues that have come up in other discussions, normally the Fire Marshal follows National Fire Protection. I forget what the A stands for, Jay, but there is a manual that the county follows. What is A in NFPA? National Fire Protection? I know, well, whatever, association, but that's what we follow. There are some things in there that are not clearly spelled out by numbers and all that. And so my question was, and Jay, you weren't there this morning, my question was, does this mean that the Fire Marshal can come up with their own number, or is it just saying that the Fire Marshal can say that these are what we're following? Do you understand my question, Jay?
Yes. This addition is to the section that deals with fire alarm requirements. We have a similar code section that is under the sprinkler system requirements, and this is to allow us to do administrative rules and things, for instance, what requires a permit, what does not require a permit, how we accept, in this case, fire alarm action plans and things like that. That's the purpose of it. And if you notice, the verbiage there says the provisions of this article, so it's limited to that specific article.
So it's limited, this is just fire alarms?
Yes, this particular section is, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
As is the same section that applies to sprinkler system.
Right, okay. And really, all it is is just, you're not setting what the standards are, you're setting up, yeah, administrative, how you're going to do the inspections and what paperwork they might need and all those kind of things.
Required documentation or forms or information to approve plans, permits.
But it's not the actual, because the actual requirements or parameters are in the NFPA.
They are in the NFPA, and under 54-54, not being amended this session, we adopt essentially what the state adopts and follows those minimum standards.
Right, and because in our code, we don't really spell out any additional standards, we're just following the state, which is the same as NFPA.
If we do, it's spelled out explicitly that we change this to this.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Yeah, except that you still say, "promulgate such rules and regulations as he deems necessary." Why would you even have to say that if it's in NFPA?
Well, this is dealing with the administrative provisions of, for instance, what we require in permitting, for instance, with fire alarms, when we require a permit to be done for work that's being done on a fire alarm, when we don't, and how that, how those permitting procedures get done and the rules that go along with that.
So why don't you say, "promulgate such administrative provisions as deemed necessary to complete..." I mean...
And we would be open to looking at a language that pointed it more.
Rules and regulations is bigger than administrative provisions.
Right, and that was really where my question was this morning, was that I saw it as rules and regulations, and I thought the rules and regulations were under the NFPA. And so what you're saying, this is really just dealing with the administrative things, not the actual rules and regulations that are a part of the fire alarm?
And it is limited to the article itself.
Right, because fire alarms is a specific section in NFPA, correct?
That is correct. It has its own standard, NFPA 70.
Right, as does sprinklers.
Yes, NFPA 13 and 13R.
Right.
Well, I think that that subsection ought to reflect that kind of intent, all right? Rules and regulations is much broader than administrative provisions.
Well...
Rules and regulations are, in my line, you know, and what gets me is that, as he deems necessary, that tells me there's some subjective interpretation that you're allowed to have here, and that's what gets us into trouble with the public.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the suggestion I would have is that, Jay, I'm assuming, and just in the work I've been working with you guys for the last three months, that you have specific instances when a permit's required, when a permit's not required. That's what we need to have in writing. I think that this code section needs to spell out exactly when a permit's required and when a permit's not required, or the steps that you want people to follow.
And I'm open to that. However, the internal policy that we have on that is eight pages long. I know that seems, on face value, seems unnecessarily...
I don't care if it's 150 pages long, all right? You're being given a blanket authority here, all right, by this rule here, all right, to say you can do what you want to based on what you think is necessary.
Well, in the administration of the adopted rules and regulations that are adopted under 54-54.
Right.
And maybe that needs some clarification. We've got a similar code section to this that deals with sprinklers that's already adopted.
Right.
And we follow that same pattern here for fire alarms.
Does 54-54 refer to the eight-page document you just referred to?
No, it does not.
See, that's, I think that's the issue that Chairman and I are getting to. You have an eight-page document that you all are following that no one knows what's in it, except for you.
Well, that's not entirely, it goes through our, it's a policy of our division that goes through the normal policy approval of all other policies of the fire alarm.
No, I understand here at the county, but the people that you all go do inspections of, they don't know what that policy is. And all, I think what the chairman's saying is, that's fine if you have an eight-page internal document, it needs to be external so that the folks that call for inspections on fire alarms or sprinklers, that they know what policy you're following. And I think that would make things a lot clearer. I mean, I'm not questioning what you have in the document.
I think we do that through some other means. Our objective is not to have anything secret or anything.
No, no, I know that. I'm just saying, I mean, I don't, I'm not questioning it.
We've got the forms that go with that policy, the permit application, spell that out for the contractor so that they know.
So now, the documents that you sent me that we've been working on, is there any reference to that eight-page document in there? Or is it, you know, the sheets you gave me that have the different inspection items?
In reference by the permit type that it addresses, yes.
Okay, yeah, I think that where some of the confusion might be happening with all the hoops we've been jumping through is that there may be some things that you all are following, which is fine, it's policy, and it's been approved by the board and all that, but the folks that are on the other end, receiving inspections, they don't know that that's what you're following, and I think that somewhere, we have to figure out the best way to get that out to the people that are calling for these inspections. I think it would make everybody's life a little bit easier.
Yeah. We've heard your concerns, and we'll come back with a revision of that particular section.
All right, thanks. Jay, if you don't mind, just stay up there with him in case there's some other questions, please.
Well, luckily, that was the last one with the Fire Marshal, sir.
Excuse me. Boy, is he happy.
Going into Chapter 62, this is areas for health and sanitation, this is under the Board of Health. Really, this one is pretty easy. The Board of Health follows rules established by the state of Georgia. Periodically, the state changes the rules. Before, we were always putting the date of the rule changes in there, and this particular code change changes each of the code dates to be as may be amended from time to time. Therefore, as the state updates the rules as it relates to public health, then our rules will be updated as well simultaneously, since we don't create our own rules as it relates to the enforcement of public health. The last area is under Chapter 122, which is utilities. This is under the general use of public water and wastewater facilities, Article 2, Water and Wastewater Systems, Section 122-152, Water Systems. Basically, this is a change as it relates to the use of master meters, and it's altering this in a manner of taking out some of the rules as it relates to master meters. That was creating some confusion in regard to that. And with that, so that concludes the code amendments that are being brought forward for the April-May timeframe. You'll have two public hearings on these particular codes on April 25th and on May 23rd, both of them in this room at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Dana. All right, I think that does all of Tab 2.
Yes, sir.
Now onto Tab 3, and Ms. Williams, welcome to approach the podium. If you have a presentation, I'll just sort of give some background here. I did some homework the other night, and looked at 12 different counties or cities in the regional area, with the exception of Charlotte and Dallas, because every time I hear a presentation from usually the chamber, they involve these two major cities in the area and how, you know, we're competing with them. And I have 12 different places here, Dallas, Mecklenburg County, which is Charlotte, Fairfax County, which is outside DC, Orange County, which is outside, the Orange County in Southern California, near Anaheim, that'd be the areas there, Savannah, Paulding, Gwinnett, Fulton County, Douglas, Cartersville, Slant, Bartow, Nashville, and Chattanooga, Cherokee, and Carroll. And every one of these cities or counties or county slash cities have an independent economic and community development agency, or they have an economic section under their community developments, or they have some form of economic agency with at least three people to connect the government with the economic activities of the county. And right now, Cobb County has one person that does this, that's under the Finance Department. And I think that, given the fact that, as we saw this morning, I heard this morning, that we're on the cusp of future greatness... And I think that, given the fact that, as we saw this morning, I heard this morning, that we're on the cusp of future greatness, I think we need to have, we need to look at how we want to structure this government to be partnered with. The economic agencies and programs are here in Cobb County, and there are many. Cobb, the Cobb Chamber is the most obvious one with this terrific Edge program, obviously ARC, I could go on and on. I just don't think that one person under the Finance Department is going to be sufficiently capable of handling a county that has, you know, over a billion dollars in proposed economic development, just in the Braves, Battery Park development alone, can handle the responsibilities that we need to do for a future movement. So I've asked Ms. Yvonne Williams, who has experience in this area, to go and give a presentation on what some of the things that we should be looking at with regard to this area. So with that, I'll turn the microphone and the podium over to you, Yvonne.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, each Commissioner, for the opportunity to be here today. It's my pleasure and the tradition of Cobb to help you all with any opportunities for you to stay in a very strong leadership position. So I've developed this presentation based on looking at several of your initiatives that are very strong in the area of economic development. Knowing your values have always been part of team, communications, integrated departments, leveraging resources that you have with your state and federal partnerships, and having top initiatives that you can roll out, knowing that they're executionable type of initiatives. You all have always been part of the regional perspective of doing the best, finding the best practice, and implementing those across scale. So you want to be future-focused. You have a wonderful platform now that you can build upon resources that will continue that tradition. And yet, there's many challenges. There's challenges of the growth, there's challenges of the transportation network, there's regional initiatives, there's population growth. So for the Chairman and each Commissioner I present, that through a look at your strategic plan, it seemed very reasonable that several had some alignments, that very strong commitments among your departments, your strategy, your execution would all deal with these top areas of leadership, efficiency of the county services, the economic vitality of each Commissioner's district. While they're very different, there are some areas that have connectable opportunity. The transportation network is right on the heels of your opportunity now, with mobility, connectivity, and the ability to have a regional strategy. So the analysis work was done to look at, where are some of the best opportunities? Where is a network for quality activity centers? You have them across the broadband of Cobb County, from CID's to town centers to cities, to development practices. There's a common advocacy agenda that can be very effective, as you've always been united. And that can go at a different scale between every Commissioner's district towards an infrastructure portfolio. There's a great way to keep the brand of Cobb at the height of the regional in terms of being a partner for all of these type infrastructure coalitions, and that brand only has a way to go forward. And then, obviously, to bring value to the citizens is the leverage of dollars. Whatever Cobb does with its FLOSH program, with its ability to partner with any of these activities, only leverages ability to attract more funding to the area. So there's a big new business philosophy. You do have the Braves, you have a $350 million commitment average in that particular portfolio. You know that there's some more analysis work to do on any kind of business expansion or property tax increase. So there is a day for capturing opportunity. And there's a day to really look at that center of activity towards the other centers of activity with venues, from Six Flags to Town Center, to Kennesaw University, to Marietta, and to across the scale of Cobb communities. Part of the work was done to look at, what are the areas to connect the dots? Where are the processes in your strategic plans, where you have all of your website of planning and processing and action items? Where can those come under the themes of competitiveness, messaging, quality of life, economic development? And then, how would we start scaling those outcomes? The Commissioner districts are very important. There's many of your gateway projects that are in those districts. There's corridors to be completed in those districts. There's bikeways, there's greenways, there's pathways, there's ability to have a really connection of the area of making places for people. Making this area a strong lure and attraction towards the new technology and the new ability to have people living, working, playing, and also always connected to their area of surface when you look at the core areas of your strategic planning process. So you have these tools on the right, you have your SPOSH, you have the Cobb Plan, livable centers initiative, greenways, Cumberland CID circulators, you have your community transit plans, you have new opportunities for transit connectivity, then your update with the comprehensive plan, and obviously, the value of your strategic plan. So looking at the SPOSH, you have a lot of work that has to come out on an evolution of analysis towards which projects are project-ready and how do they come out to a portfolio? And that is part of your cycle of leadership and why that's important, so that each district can decide what are the priorities? How do we focus? And where are those connectivities within the transportation, housing, residential, public space, all of those realms of countywide authority? Your departments are very sophisticated with resources of people and capacity. And that can go to scale when you align all of the activities of the previous tools to where those departments come together in integrated creative spaces for looking towards possibilities for implementation and focus on priority for results. So these are some conceptual ideas of how all of those areas would come together with the tools on the right of the things you have in your portfolio. The team collaboration means a great deal towards the value of public-private partnership. The teams go out to the community and help with the business service agenda. Businesses get a high quality of service from their alignment with the Commissioners and with the staff team. And their resources show efficiency, cost alignment, and improved use of resources. There is not a need to spend extra money on a lot of extra planning processes or consulting overhead. You have a lot of great tools in place where the departments can have their ability to bring those economies of scales together and see towards the execution of your delivery. So on the right side of some of the, some of the things on the ground that really make a lot of branding sense to the public, you've got gateways entering these wonderful communities across Cobb. You've got bus stops and shelters and things that will be efficient towards the use of people riding a transit system and building that capacity. You have transportation corridors that can include the greenway and the bikeable, the pad, so that people have the mobile choice of how they access their centers. The trails and greenways are very unique to Cobb. Cobb is known for its beautiful park space and its ability to preserve greenways. And that in a master plan will make a huge difference towards public perception of what's implemental around Atlanta in the next five, 10 years. And then, obviously, you have your district revitalization projects. Those are very important to continue Cobb to be holistic around the county towards how these districts are surviving and how they're branded, and then, how are they of economic scale? So what's good for West Cobb can be also seem to be great for South Cobb, for East Cobb, and for the central part of the county. I picked out some of the ones that were shown on your website that seem to have implementational opportunity in the next near term. So there's a few corridors on the left that make a lot of sense to continue towards the balance of the county. And then, obviously, there are the communities that have the respectful identity that are so important towards the Cobb background of cities and town centers. So these are the type of line projects that could be seen on a one-year, five-year plan, where the departments are integrated and there's a lot of focus on how do we deliver in a comprehensive manner towards multimodal development, activity, and a new opportunity for attracting investment, jobs, and ability to be competitive. This is a conceptual budget. I say conceptual because that is exactly what this is. This comes together from some research of other counties who are beginning this process, building towards a much larger consortium of partnerships, of ability to have opportunities for investment opportunities and separate type facilities that allow them to put program services in place, whatever's unique to those areas. But this is conceptual and allows some sort of discussion towards a six-month plan, building to a year plan with a secondary budget that would allow you all to look at the opportunities for going into a two, three, four, five-year plan. It is not totally comprehensive, but it is a look at the sort of opportunities that would be unique for Cobb. So your outcomes are, you're becoming very comprehensive, you're integrated, there are no silos, there's lots of room for growth for everybody in economic development. But Cobb has to leave with infrastructure. Infrastructure is under purview of Cobb. There's your, all of the activity in the Cobb County area depends on Cobb's infrastructure. And infrastructure is a lot bigger base of opportunity than it is from the previous years. It's all about land use, all about transportation, public safety, the ability to brand, the signage, the branding, the multimodal. All of those departments are very important towards this portfolio of outcomes. So this is just a quote that I particularly like. "It's never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has," by Miss Mead. And I gave you a supplemental document for you because I have tweaked another budget that would be a point of consideration as you look at towards resources and the ability to have opportunities in a timeframe that suits the needs of Cobb. So these are for your opportunity to have in thoughtful presence of discussion.
Thank you, Yvonne. Now, just for more background here, I look at the past couple of months here, when I have been discussions with Gary Bottoms of the Cobb Chamber. I've been, Holly Quinnlan's come by and asked, you know, obviously, for a plus-up to what our contribution is to Cobb Tourism and Travel. And then, I look at what Michael Hughes is doing. And it just seems to me that we have three entities here that are transformative, but we're not connected to each other. Nor do I plan to integrate this or merge this into one new entity. I think what we need to have here is a partnership so that, for instance, whoever. The Cobb Edge Program has been extremely successful in bringing, attracting businesses to Cobb County. But the bottom line is, is that nothing happens until this potential business enterprise or customer comes to community development and then has explained to them what it is that they can do. And I think that we're missing a step here because instead of having these business enterprises go into two or three stops before they finally get out what the reality is on the ground, we have an informal or formal partnership between the county and the business enterprises, like the Chamber and Cobb Tourism and Travel, where when we have a potential customer come to the county, we're all sitting down at the same table, and they ask the right questions and we have the right answers right in place. Right now, this customer has to go to three different people, and I just think that's not very efficient. Moreover, we're asking entities outside the county to discuss what it is the county can bring to the table, when in fact, we should be telling people what we can bring to the table because we know better than anybody else what it is that we're capable of doing and delivering. So my vision is, is that we pull out the economic, we pull out Michael Hughes from underneath the Finance Department, we re-energize this Economic Development Agency, whatever you want to call it. We give it, you know, we give it some sort of, you know, a brand-new mission. It's not some sort of, it's be connected to the strategic plan. But it has to be something where it's going to have to, like Yvonne's done here, it's got to have a return. In other words, whatever we do here has got to have a return for the investment we're going to make in these new positions. It has to be very clearly defined, it has to have a metric, and we need to be very, very clear as what we want them to achieve in a certain period of time. But right now, I ask you one simple question at the board. We know that for four nights a year, we can use SunTrust Stadium, all right? That's in the development agreement. Can anybody tell me what agency in this government can go out and do that? What, if, for those four nights, all right, let's say, let's say that, you know, Elton John wants to come and perform at SunTrust Stadium on one of the four nights that we have. How do we market that as a county to our advantage? Something that simple.
And we get the proceeds?
We got everything. But who has, what mechanism do we have in Cobb County that can do that right now? The answer is none. All right, we have, we have a business partnership with the Braves, where we get to use that magnificent stadium four nights a year. And we have no mechanism to market that or to use that as an attraction point to bring somebody into the county, all right? Battery Park, the Town Center CID, what they're doing up there, Cumberland CID. We have a number of enterprises that we can take credit for being in Cobb County, and yet, we expect every one of these entities to go out there and sell themselves to our prospective cousin. We do not have a common approach driven by the county where we sell ourselves to the world. We do not. And I just find that remarkable, given all the examples that I have, that I just told you about, that every single county surrounding us has that capability for the most part, but we don't. So we're advertising ourselves as doing, as being the best, and I really believe that we have the potential for being even better if we can find a way to take a look at the fact that whether we like it or not, we are now part of a major business enterprise by being part of the Braves. And we need to change our outlook on how we sell ourselves to the world. Commissioner Rod.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we actually did have a bigger economic development, we actually, it was separate. And then, the previous chairman wanted to spin it off and privatize it in essence and put it over with the Chamber and Edge. And the board was not in support of that. And so what happened is, we got into the situation we're in right now. But we did have a separate economic development department that did some of the things that you were talking about. So now, are you proposing here, you're not proposing spinning off economic development away from the county? The county would still, you're nodding your head, that was an either-or.
It'll be ours.
Okay, so we're made in the county.
It's a county, it's a county, it's on the county staff, all right? It is meant to be, it is meant to, when Brooks Mathis goes out or Holly Quinnlan goes out, all right, and they have a proposal, our representative is there to represent the county, all right, because they know this county. And it's a joint informal partnership right now between the Chamber, Travel Tourism, and us. Those are the three that I can think of right away, could be Cumberland CID. But when somebody comes to the table and wants to know, they want to come to Cobb County, I want somebody at that table from this government saying, this is what we can do for you.
Well, and what the previous boards had discussed was that, at some point in time, the district commissioner needs to be brought into that discussion.
Sure.
There were specific guidelines as to the number of jobs or the economic impact that a particular business had before the county would entertain, you know, economic incentives. Because the bottom line is, these folks are not, they're coming to the county to come here, but they're coming to the county for incentives.
Sure.
And it's either going to be development fees, you know, zoning fees, or it's going to be money from the Development Authority, or it's going to be tax payments. And the county commission can only do the zoning, the permitting and developmental fees. The other two are independent of the county. So, you know, I think, I don't have a problem with doing this, but I do think that at some point in time, the district commissioners need to be involved in the discussion.
Oh, sure, this is why, this is why.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about the discussion of creating this. I'm talking about when an entity comes to the county.
Right.
And if they want to locate, say, in South Cobb, and Commissioner Cupid's district, she should be part of the discussion.
Well, those are, and the thing about having our own department is that they would be sensitive to that and know that there's a procedure. Like, for instance, when something comes to me, I simply say, what district is it in? Have you talked to the county commissioner? All right, that's the way, obviously, I've been trying to run this government.
Right, no, and I agree with that. I'm just saying that the reason we're in the situation we're in today is because we were kind of in that situation absent the district commissioner being involved. And then, there was an attempt to push it out the door completely to the Chamber, and the commissioners did not like that. And so we kind of got stuck in limbo where we are now.
Well, I'm trying to get us out of limbo. Commissioner Earl, I'm just going to go down the table here, okay? So.
Also, I think we're missing the boat not utilizing or working with the state of Georgia with the Georgia Power Resource Center that they have downtown, where any corporation or business that wants to come to Georgia, they can show a map of all the areas and where there's, you know, heavy industrial, light industrial, commercial, whatever, and partner with the counties to get people to come to Cobb as opposed to, I mean, they're the whole state. But I think we're maybe missing out by not utilizing that resource and partnering with the state economic development.
I couldn't agree with you more. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think that what we have is, we have various entities all doing the same thing, and that could or could not be a bad thing. I think that we do have our internal economic development. I think that we do have our internal Economic Development Department, maybe reporting the wrong way or to the wrong department, and I tend to agree with you on that. I know competitive edge is a public-private partnership, which is similar to what you're proposing, I think, or, or considering, and it's been very, very successful, and we have contributed to that. I know that some of these authorities, the CID's and Travel and Tourism, all have funding issues of their own, and asking them to all contribute to something, especially Travel and Tourism, since we already have a unique funding mechanism for them anyway, and I think we're the only county that has this, they're woefully underfunded. There's merit here, but I'm not sure how you could put it together. But I also think that this is a separate entity from marketing the Braves Stadium for times of year, that to me, that's a commercial promoter or something of that nature, and that economic development would be revenue as opposed to a economic development tool, I think. And that should be somebody that understands how to promote venues and not someone else who do economic development.
I, I, I agree with you. We're just getting into, you know, specific job skills. The bottom line is, I, I know what I can do well, all right? I came from a government background, so I think my skills are in running the Cobb County Government, all right? There are some chairmen who are entrepreneurs or business people, they would feel comfortable going out and making pitches for the, for the county and letting the government, you know, be run by, by the board or the county manager. So what I'm saying is that I recognize that what we need here is somebody that can pitch the county on the economic base. I use the, the Braves Stadium as just one small example. They would recognize that, and they would be within their universe, you know, to find a way to make that happen on behalf of the county, because they are, they are assigned responsibility for economic enhancement of the county, not just development and growth, but if somebody wants to come and use the stadium right now, that might be one of their collateral responsibilities. But what I'm trying to do here is just, we need to have somebody in this county that goes out and pitches the, that can speak for the economic potential of this county and why we want you to come here, and I'm here to tell right now, I'm not that guy. Okay? I'm not that guy. I can tell you why, the specifics, but we need to have someone that has a background in economic development and growth that, when it comes down to the nitty-gritty, they understand that language and that communication, and they can go and speak to it because they have the backing of the board. Commissioner Burrow, keep it.
I support the general direction that's being shared about us having more of a stake in economic development here, so I support that. I appreciate the presentation. A lot of it was dense for me without seeing a lot more text, even though I know you provided the handout behind it. So I don't necessarily know if this is, you know, a specific framework to support this initiative, but I do believe it's a good direction for us to consider, for us making sure we're more robust in how we address economic development. I've shared in the past that there's one thing to consider, bringing in new development, but economic development is much broader than that. It's about maintaining your existing businesses as much as it is bringing in new businesses and developing your workforce, and also looking at what are entrepreneurial opportunities also within the county. And I also think while we may look at economic development from a macro perspective, there's also a micro development perspective. What are some of the neighborhood needs for development that we just, we do not see that being addressed from the other entities that are here in Cobb, and that's an advantage, I think, that we could have here locally. So I'm certainly supportive of us trying to do more in-house and us putting the resources behind it. It's one thing to talk about, it's another thing to put money and people towards that effort.
Yeah, and I recognize, which is why I appreciate her being very open with the projected budget. I want to make sure you don't have this backdoor kind of approach to, you know, the nose under the tent, you find out the nose belongs to a camel. So what I, what I've asked her to do is just give us, you know, from her perspective, what it would cost to do for something once we're full up and running, but I also appreciate that this is something that, given that we're in a very tight fiscal budget year coming up, we need to, if we're going to do this, and I really want to encourage us to do this, we do it incrementally, where we spend the first year really nailing down what it is we want to do, so then 2019, when the, when my campaign commitment has been fulfilled and we can really unleash what we have to do here with, with resources, we're prepared to launch into that, into that year. But I really believe that, again, a county of this magnitude with this kind of potential, we need to have something that responds to the board that, you know, can, can carry this economic, can carry our economic message to the world. And right now, we're the beneficiary of many different great programs in the county, but we're not the one driving the train. And eventually, we're going to miss out because we're not part of the discussion, we're always being brought in at the end of the discussion. And I think we need to be out front at the nose of the discussion. Everybody knows that if you talk economic development in Cobb County, you need to talk to us because nothing happens without us approving what you want to do.
Yeah, one other component that I would add to this, and this would be community development, because Dana's office tracks or keeps a redevelopment inventory, and also, and it's not called a vacant property inventory, but, because not everybody that's coming here, it's not just a matter of just selling the county, but it's also if somebody's looking for a particular thing and, and getting with Commissioner Burrow's idea of, you know, working with the, the state, we need to be able to have a list of opportunities. So if somebody comes to the state, they can call up our, whoever this person is and what you're talking about here, and can say, hey, we're looking for X, and they can immediately go to the list that Dana's group would maintain and be able to say, we've got it right here, or we've got these options right there. And, and that's kind of what we've been doing from the economic development standpoint. It really hasn't been selling the county, but it's been more providing the opportunities that we have. So I think that would be a critical component of it also.
Redevelopment is a huge part of economic development, and we do have some plans in place in Commissioner Cupid's district, my district, Commissioner Hart's district, that, that we have made progress on just in the last few years, reducing the number of sites on that list throughout the county. One other thing that I'd like to ask Yvonne is, is this a recommendation for moving forward as far as a plan for what you see?
I, I've been helping out with this for about six months, so I just wanted to let it be a way for y'all to have a good discussion document. And it could be a startup plan, but in this plan, there would have to be which areas would you want to have first focused because of the ability to marry the community, we're marrying community development and economic development in a very strategic way, and that's from research that's been done from the major cities Chairman Joyce talked about. They are really moving those to be very integrated because of the points you all have made today, that that redevelopment, those corridors, that's all part of the natural ability to attract the quality businesses, but you package it, you talk about it, it's part of your speak, and it's marketed, you know, it's part of what is at the table. When the developers are coming, when companies are coming, the first thing they ask is, what is your mobility plan? What is your greenway plan? What are some of the corridors that you're redeveloping? How is it all integrated? And do you have a one-stop kind of operation? And that's where you've got the great departments, it's just how do we get all that matrix pulled together so that it is part of the, being at the table?
Yeah, and, and some of these suggestions or things that you've outlined are in place and have, we have been working. I, I think I'd like to meet with you maybe individually or, again, as a board, however you think we should proceed, for more detail and, I guess, a more detailed plan of moving forward or how to implement some of the things and direction on.
I'm going to sit down with Michael Hughes and Dana, all right, and come up with a, with a, with a more shaped plan, okay? I'll probably also reach out to Holly and Brooks to let, oh, there's a lot of concern about we're trying to replace what the Chamber's doing, that's absolutely not true, all right? We just need to have an entity in the government here that, that can, you know, we're, we're partners, we sell all our, we all have a certain responsibility in the county because of what our focus is, but we're all working together for the same cause. And so let me get with Dana and Michael, all right, and Yvonne, and we'll come up with a more shaped approach as to how we want to do this with a timeline.
Okay.
And a proposed budget, and then we'll come back to, and then I'll let, I'll send that individually to the board members, and then if you want to meet with Yvonne, I'm sure she'd be delighted to meet with you. I've met with her several times, she's, she's very focused and aggressive. I like it.
And as far as marketing or, you know, economic development for the county, I think the five of us are going to be the biggest cheerleaders for bringing business here and especially marketing our own districts because we know, you know, where the redevelopment is and where the, the new business or new development is. And, you know, I, I didn't realize that we could use the stadium for concerts or our own benefit.
There's a lot of.
I thought it was like the four days that we get it were for like community events, like a recycling day or something like that.
There's still a cost involved with that.
There's a huge cost.
The Rays aren't going to do it for free.
Well, I know, but I mean.
I don't think.
If you wanted Elton John to come, I would say hire an entertainment group.
I get, right.
To bring them in and give us a percentage of the.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking big.
I know.
And I'm just thinking new, but I'm just, we just need to have, we had it one time, and I could have said here, I, there, a county of this size, and as I did my homework, I didn't see any county that's successful that did not have an economic development agency somewhere in their government, either it was partnered with community development, it was an independent, it was a private, public-private, but it was there, and we simply don't have it. And with all we have in this county, we need to have somebody when we're all running around here doing our job, that we know, knows what the sheet of music looks like because we've told them what it is, and they're out there making that pitch to us, and then they're informing us, no, okay, Commissioner Burrow, I talked to somebody yesterday that wants to do something on Canton Highway, and they talked to you, all right? Rather than we're cherry picking right now, they're all trying to figure out where to put something, because we have people outside the county speaking for us in the county. And, and, you know, to some point, I understand and appreciate that, but I think the only people who speak for the county for economic development is Cobb County, and we have an entity that does that. So I'll go, I'll move ahead with that, I'll get with Michael and Dana and Yvonne. That was a great presentation. Thank you for all that you've done to work this together, Yvonne.
But, Chairman, I, I like to be a part of that.
Absolutely, sure, I apologize.
And I think as Commissioner Hart pointed out, we temporarily moved Michael over to finance because the Chamber was asking us to put money into a program and give certain things up, and this board was not willing to.
Right.
But at the same time, that's the reason the Pendleton Study was commissioned.
Right.
So we could determine our organizational structure and where we need to go. So I just wanted to remind you.
Well, it's all going to come together at one time, though, it's perfect.
Yes.
That's right. It says you're going to have some free time. Okay, thank you again, and now, the last tab, Mr. Volkman, and I just want to make sure that everyone here has a copy of the mid-year budget update as well as the list that, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Per year direction, we are trying to make the budget process a little bit more transparent. So this is our first mid-year budget update, so I want to give you some historical information before we get into some of the numbers. The second slide here is the total budget for all operating funds that we adopted in FY17, so you can just see the total breakout and percentage of the overall budget. For example, general fund is almost 44 or 45% of the overall adopted FY17 budget. The next slide specifically focuses in on the general fund, so you can see the general fund is $383 million, and what we did here is break it out by major service category, and you'll notice that the elected officials and constitutional officers make up the, the largest percentage of the overall budget, which is 36, almost 36% of the overall general fund budget. This is, just to give you a little bit idea of kind of how we break this out, and we tried to go by agency and then, again, major category of service. Okay, so what we did here is we wanted to show you the general fund's budget, what we did is showed operating revenue, operating revenues as well as the major expenditure categories, current budget, actuals through March of 17 and actuals of March, through March of 16, kind of giving apples-to-apples comparison of how we're trending compared to last year. If you go to the very bottom of this slide, you'll notice the general fund has currently generated $61 million of a negative change in fund balance or excess deficiencies of revenues over slash under expenditure, so I'm just going to say change in fund balance is a little easier and a little cleaner. So you can see a $12 million variance there. This is part of the planned fund balance reduction that we're going to see in 2017. So we'll get into the specifics on the revenues and expenditures as we get a little bit later in the presentation, but the key here, as I want to show you, is although that we are generating $61 million negative, this is part of the plan. And one major reason this is a negative is general fund is, is a large source of their revenues is property taxes. We don't begin collecting that till late August, September, October, November, December, and so on. So we'll get into some of the other funds that have a similar revenue situation here in a few minutes. All right? But again, going back to the planned fund balance reduction, there are several large items that we did through the reserve process that we will, basically prior year revenues that we collected in 16 or 15 that we reserved and set aside for a specific use to be spent in 2017. This slide here shows us the total, and these are just the major ticket items, there are a few other small items, but to give you an idea, $14.3 million of monies that we collected in prior years that we will be spending in FY17. Stadium bond debt service, this is a portion that we collected in prior years, capital maintenance or capital equipment and accountable equipment, $4 million, we addressed through, through fund balance. Yes, sir.
Okay, first of all, go back one slide.
Go back one slide. Yes, sir.
Nope, go one more.
One more.
There we go. Would you clarify who these elected and constitutional officers are?
Yes, sir. It is not the Board of Commissioners, sir. This is, this is the Sheriff's Office and things of that nature. Sheriff's Office actually makes up the vast majority of this budget, so this is not the Board of Commissioners, sir, just to be clear. Okay?
I was going to say, I was looking for a pay raise.
Uh, no, sir, your budget is not included in there. And if it was, it would not make a dent. The Board of Commissioners' budget is much smaller than that by sheer.
I, I know it's the Sheriff's Department is way back in the back in the dark part of the, of the, of the room here for hiding behind Chief Cox.
And also, just to clarify, public safety in this case, this refers to basically police. We, we want, we've shown in the past that we've included a lot of the courts under public safety, but for this instance, they are under the elected officials' categories.
Right, absolutely right.
Okay.
That's right, all right. So go forward two now, go back to where we were for, okay. Now, this, these here, these are, these are bills we're, that are, that are going to have to be sustained through next year, right?
These are bills that will go out the door in fiscal year 17. Now, some of these are reoccurring.
Right.
For example, the paying class, we, we set aside $13 million. We know that the FY17 impact for the implementation will be 2.6. We have the additional 10.4 that'll be set aside for 18's impact of the paying class.
Okay.
Vehicle replacement and, and accountable on capital equipment, this, these are reoccurring costs, but when we get into the expenditure side, I was going to talk about the fact that we don't adopt these. During the economic downturn, we got away from the adoption of capital items, and we've addressed them through fund balance. The goal is to get these back on the adoption process.
Okay.
The other one is capital maintenance. You see the $1.2 million?
Right.
This is the first year that we'll be contributing to capital maintenance, but this is a reoccurring cost.
Right.
Okay?
As is the bond service.
Yes, sir, and after, after this year, we will basically be, we'll have debt service on a going-forward basis, but this is specific to revenues that we collected in prior years that will be applying to debt service in FY17.
Okay, so for the pay, paying class impact.
Yes, sir.
Starting in fiscal year 19, 19, all right?
19 will have to be addressed by reoccurring.
What will be, what will be the recurring cost of that?
Well, we.
Right now.
Well, right now.
For 19?
Well, we're, we're going to take the, basically the 17 and apply it forward through merit or anything else that we apply.
Yeah.
So we're, we're saying the reoccurring cost for the impact of paying class is an estimate of $10.4 million.
Per, per annum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's before we start addressing any other effort to try and add to that?
Correct. That is, that is the initial estimate before appeals, and then also we have to factor in the reoccurring escalating cost of healthcare and pension and things of that nature.
Okay. And the vehicle replacement, this is, you have to make that now a line item every year?
It has been a line item in the past, what was taken out a few years ago, and now we try to address it as a, as a.
Okay.
Available fund balance. We've spoken with Fleet, and they gave us an early estimate of if we could do roughly $2.5 million annually, that would keep us up to, up to par where we need to be with our vehicle replacement. This is vehicle replacement, not expanding.
Right, this is recapitalization of the. Right, this is recapitalization of the fleet.
Exactly, sir.
So I think it'd be important for fleet maintenance, you know, to give the commissioners an idea of what they're talking about, two million. All right, I don't have a problem with the number.
Yes, sir.
I just think that they gave it some meat, okay? Because like I said the other day, I was at the airport and that that Ford Explorer had a hundred seventy-two thousand miles on it.
Yes, sir.
And and I'm sure there's, there's equal stories like that over in senior services. So if we could get some idea of what we're, what the schedule is and what we're replacing. Because this does include the the take home cars, does it?
This does not include the take home car, sir.
Right. Okay, thanks.
There, this would, this would address some of the PD vehicle replacement. But again, this tries to address countywide vehicle replacements.
And likewise, if you'd flesh out the various accountable and capital equipment.
Yes, sir.
Give the commissioner some idea what we're talking about here.
Absolutely, and I just to touch on that briefly, this is comes from their, each department's capital request in the seventeen budget process.
I'm fine with that. I'm sure it's a great, no, I just, I think once the commissioners see that, they'll understand, oh, okay, now I see what you're talking about.
Will do, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we talked about how we're going to generate a net loss and that is planned. Part of what we have here, this is the revenue slide for the general fund. The number that I want to point out is at the very top. If you look at the variance number for taxes, you can see we're down almost four point three million dollars. The answer, the the cause of this is simply the title ad valorem adjustment taxes that we collect. If if you remember when when that went into effect, the county saw a huge influx of revenue. But we knew that that was going to go on a bell curve and start winding down. The last few years, it has start to started to decrease. At the peak, we were collecting over sixteen million dollars a year. We are projected to be around five and a half million dollars for seventeen. So we are coming down that bell curve. Now, one of the things that we did, knowing that this would happen, is we set aside a reserve of roughly ten plus million dollars to soften that blow as we start to go down. We have not touched that in the past years because we've been able to absorb some of that decrease through expenditure savings and well, as well as growth in the digest. But what we did this year is what we took a a pretty good stance on the digest growth and we just got our latest projections from the Tax Assessor's Office. And we've hit that mark. It was roughly five point four percent is the early net growth in the digest. He he provided us a projection of six percent gross. So that works its down, down way or way down to approximately five and a half percent. We'll finalize that number in June, but we're using that to move forward. So the decrease in revenue that you see here is specifically to the title ad of Lorm tax.
It's a ten million delta per annum starting in two thousand eighteen, right?
It is a ten million one-time reserve. So we, once we use it, it starts to go away. So we do have to wean ourselves off this, basically this revenue source as we move forward.
Well, according to your chart here, we'll get five and a half million roughly per year starting two thousand seventeen, right?
We, but you got to remember, it was at a high point of sixteen million.
I get that.
It's going to continue to slide down to zero.
It's going to go to zero.
It could, it's going to get, it's going to get close to zero.
Wow.
But that included, back then, the birthday tax, which is now gone away. And now, instead of us paying three, four hundred dollars a car, we're paying twenty-five dollars a car. And so the five million revenue would only be new vehicle sales or transfers or something like that. Is that the way I'm reading it?
Yes, basically what happened is we used to pay the birthday birthday tax and the state made an agreement to make us whole on that. So we're continuing, we collect roughly fifteen million dollars for the birthday tax in two thousand twelve. The state has agreed to keep us whole at that at that fifteen million dollars as we move forward. That revenue has stayed the same. Because if that, as the birthday tax falls off, we get additional T A B T tax to keep us at that fifteen million. What we're talking about here with this adjustment for the T A B T is additional revenues that we were not getting prior to the birthday tax. Specifically, some of these were in sploshed for sales on vehicles, we're going into sploshed. Now they're being allowed to come into the general fund because of the legislation changes. But that revenue is what is dwindling. So in two thousand thirteen, we saw that spike of additional revenues for the general fund because we still got the birthday tax dollars, the fifteen million. And then we got additional revenues on top of that.
How long will that continue to?
That that is what we're seeing dwindling. The the birthday tax, we're supposed to be sustained on that, on that revenue. So fifteen million will stay there. What we're seeing is those additional revenues are coming back down.
But the bottom lines, we're still, we're still fifty million dollars we're not getting anymore.
No, we are getting the fifteen million.
I know, but the, on top of that was another what?
Yes, another sixteen million.
Yeah, so we're not getting that anymore.
That that is slowly going away, yes, sir.
Well.
But even the birthday tax over time, as people sell those vehicles and switch over to the T A B T.
Yes.
I mean, the birth, the fifteen million is not going to continue forever.
The the fifteen million, basically the percentages change from the birthday tax. That number gets smaller and smaller each year and the state amount that the amount that we get from the state to keep us whole grows. So we always been been able to stay at fifteen million, but the percentage of this is how much we've collected from birthday taxes versus state has changed as the birthday tax continues to come down.
So the fifteen million then will always be there regardless of the percentage of birthday? Because the states, until they change.
Basically, that that is, that is correct. What we're seeing is the the additional revenues, the bell curve. Does that make sense?
And we knew from day one that it wasn't going to be that high every year once it started tapering off. Why, I guess that's why we have the reserve in place. Because we knew that even though it came in higher than projected initially over, you know, like the first three or four years, it's, we knew it wasn't going to stay at up that high.
Exactly, you're exactly right. This was not a a long-term revenue source that we could count on. We knew, we were hoping to go out, you know, five to push ten years at at the maximum. But five years is kind of what we were looking at, but we wanted to make sure we set aside that reserve. So that sixteen million, we set aside some of that money to soften the blow as we start to come down that bell curve.
Okay.
And we have not touched that yet, but that is, that is something that we, you know, have in our back pocket to look at as as we continue to watch these revenues decline. Okay. Going down the other revenue sources, most of these are pretty much on par from where they were last year as well as expected to beat budget. The only one that has come out, stand out as a as another little area of concern is fines and forfeitures. Again, this is one that we've talked about in the past, basically traffic citations and things of that nature. This has dropped significantly over this past ten, ten years or so. This has been a nationwide thing that we've looked at. But just to kind of give you an idea, that has continued to fall a little bit more. Last year, we actually had a slight uptick, but we're getting it down this year. But basically, you can see that the primary driver of the operating revenue variance is the T A B T, which is what we're focusing on here. Okay. Oh, sorry, I wanted to say one more thing. The also, the tax revenue number is based on the six point eight nine mils, mils, which includes a point two three millage shift from the debt service to the general fund to cover the the stadium bond debt service as planned. Again, the board will vote on that this July. But once we get the final digest numbers, so, but that that is how this budget was adopted. So I just want to remind you of that. And then we'll jump in briefly to the expenditures. Again, high level, general fund personnel or personnel services. We see four point five million dollar variance over where we were last year. Again, this is a planned variance. This isn't anything that's unexpected. We know we had a full year of merit cost in there as well as increase to fringe benefits, increased cost for medical pension, things of that nature. So again, that that is not an unexpected variance. But I wanted to let you know again that the current budget that you see there, the two hundred and sixty-nine million, does include the two point six million dollars that we have planned for the paying class implementation. Based on early projections, we plan to be very close to the budget. Part of the reason that we're going to be so close is that when we adopted the seventeen budget, we did not include funding for vacancies. And the pub, public safety, police received fifty percent funding and sheriff received twenty-five percent funding for their vacancies. All other departments did not receive funding for vacancies. So we should be pretty spot on our budget this year. Operating expenditures, our operating expenditures, you can see, we're basically right in line where we were last year. That makes sense because basically seventeen was a flat operating budget from sixteen, so we're, we're right on par there. Capital expenditures, again, we talked about the adopted budget being zero. We've got away from adopting this in the past. We do have seven point five million dollars in there currently, which is again, what we address through fund balance and reserves. We are on par for where we, where we finished last year for the capital as well. One of the big increases that you'll see is debt service. This is the stadium bonds. This is solely the stadium bonds that we pay out of here. So we have very little control over this. We know exactly what it's going to be for the next thirty years and we'll plan accordingly. Okay, all right. But to give you an idea, we talked about this already. This is a planned reduction in fund balance. The general fund will generate a net loss this year, but it is a planned net loss. With that being said, we did want to remind the board of the, here are some of the major ticket items that we had in consideration when we went through the seventeen adoption process. We were able to take a couple of these items off through board action. One was the body cameras. So we were able to address that. The rest of these have been pretty consistently on the list that we, we know there's a need and we know there's a, there's desire to move forward with that. But the way we are trending in seventeen, you'd be looking more at a cut add type scenario versus additional revenues coming in to sustain some of these. And then also, I wanted to point out, and this is, this is part of the handout that we've now provided on each B O C. Here's the eighteen impact items that we've already approved through through B O C action during seventeen that will impact us in eighteen. So this is additional two point seven, two point eight million dollars that will have to be included in the eighteen budget. Basically, right off the top, before we consider additional services or anything of that nature. These things have been approved and need to be included in the budget as we move forward. All right, so that kind of sums up the general fund. We're going to talk about some of the other major funds that we have in the county. Fire Fund, we'll start with them. You'll notice it will see roughly thirty-six point nine million dollars of net loss so far this year. Again, this is planned. This fire fund relies primarily on property taxes. We don't begin, we don't collect those until later in the year, so this is nothing out of the ordinary, nothing to be concerned about. But one of the things I do want to call, bring to your attention is if you notice on their capital line under their FY17 budget, you'll see seventeen million dollars. If you remember, in two thousand sixteen, the fire department brought forward a capital, capital replacement plan before the board and presented their plan of how they're going to go through their capital. During the downturn of in the economy, they deferred a lot of their capital projects. They brought the plan before the board. This is them implementing the plan. So they have seventeen million dollars of capital as we move forward. And then we'll reevaluate that as we go through the year and make sure we can sustain that plan into eighteen, nineteen, and then forward. So, but Fire Fund is doing quite well, strong fund balance. As far as their their cash position, we know they typically don't have much cash during the year. But we get that inflow at the end of the year with property taxes.
I don't know.
Okay, Streetlight District Fund. If you all remember, a few years ago, we brought this forward and broke it out as its own separate fund. We also did a Streetlight District rate increase with the understanding that we would set aside with a goal of getting to ten percent of the adopted budget, which is roughly six hundred thousand dollars in fund balance as a reserve. We have met that and we have begun discussing that with D O T as to go back and look at the rates to see if there's any rate adjustments we could make. Because the rate increase that we have done has allowed us to meet our goals. And then also, we received a one-time credit on our utility costs this year, which will help the, help this fund out even more. But that was based on an audit that was done over a multi-year period, so that's not a reoccurring savings. How, with that being said, we have met our goals for the fund balance reserve and we are going to consider, or we are looking into those rates. If there is a rate adjustment that that can be brought back before the board, we will do so. And we will include you in those conversations. Okay, Parking Deck Fund. One of the things we want to point out here is the Parking Deck Fund is being subsidized by the general fund. I believe you all are aware that we went out to R F P to look at ways to make this fund self-sufficient. Those bids have come in, the committees are beginning to meet and evaluate those bids. This is going to range from a variety of options. This will still be managed by the county, but we're looking at rates, automa, are making it more automated and things of that nature. And once the committee, committee meets and determines whatever the best bid is, they will bring that, 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 that before the board for discussion. Okay. All right, our E nine one one fund, this is a strong performing fund. I know we have some item or an item on the agenda or for tomorrow night to to appropriate some fund balance. We did increase the rates effective April one from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty. We do know that the state is going to be looking to start collecting those funds and taking their cut. So we will continue to monitor that in the future. But as of right now, this fund is performing very well. And the reason we did the rates is because we knew the operating costs were escalating as well as we have some capital needs that are going to be coming down the future, are going to be coming to us in the future that we'll need to be addressing. Okay, all right, the Transit Fund. The reason we put the Transit Fund on here, this is the, this is probably the fund that has the most in or more, most impact on the general fund as far as a variance for savings or any, any well, basically for savings. The general fund has a two point four or twelve point four million dollar subsidy that we send or we have budgeted to send to the Transit Fund each and every year. We have sent as little as almost three and a half to four million dollars and we've sent the full amount. The the reason that varies so much is basically the timing in which grants come in to the county. I know we've had a lot of agenda items come forward recently for grants. Those don't necessarily span our fiscal years, so we do have some overlap. And some years, we collect slightly more grants and some we have less. And also, it determines how much of those grants can be used for operational impact for the Transit Fund versus capital. But just to kind of give you an idea, again, we have twelve point four million dollars budgeted. We have currently sent a little over four million dollars to the Transit Fund thus far. We still have six months left in the year, so we still have some room there. But, yes, sir.
And the contingency is twelve million or twelve thousand?
The subsidy is twelve point four million. So and we have sent roughly four million dollars.
I'm looking at your line here, it says contingencies, I'm trying to read.
Oh, contingency, that not, that that's not, that's not the subsidy. That is just contingency, fund balance contingency that the, that we carried forward from a previous year.
That's still, that's twelve thousand.
That is twelve thousand, yes, sir.
So where's the?
We, we stopped with operating costs, but up in the revenues, you'll see twenty million. You see the the twenty million dollar budget? Within that is going to be your, will be the subsidy. Does that make sense?
Correct, but if I, yeah, now I understand.
Okay.
I, you said twelve four and there's almost twelve four there.
We just put a total in there, you're, you're exactly right, sir. Twelve four is not on there, but it is included in the twenty million. So if you look at the seven million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars under the twenty seventeen actual number, that includes any dollars that we've sent from the general fund to transit thus far this year. Okay, and the twelve million that I referred to would be in the twenty million dollar budget for total revenues. Okay. All right. And this is the last fund that we have up here. This is our Water Operations Fund. One of the things I wanted to point out here is that this fund, it looks like it's performing very well. However, the twenty seventeen fund, we do have a fund balance reduction plan here. And part of that is going to be, although it does look like we have generated nine point two million dollars versus fifteen million last year, we are still looking pretty strong. With that being said, there's going to be a twenty million dollar population in the depreciation number in April. In two thousand sixteen, basically, we, we populate October through April in the month of April for all, for the monthly depreciation cost for the water fund. So in two thousand sixteen, that fifteen million would actually go to a negative in April. In two thousand seventeen, the depreciation will be pretty much the same and you'll see that go to a negative. Depreciation is not cash, this is a way for us to set aside additional to recoup the or spread out the cost of the assets that we purchase. So with that being said, I want to also point out that the transfers outnumber. You'll notice there's a large variance of nine million dollars there. Now, there's a variety of transfers out within this Water Operation Fund. A lot of it goes to other water funds for capital improvement and maintenance and things of that nature as well as debt service. But the the major, the major driver of this number is the transfer from the water fund to the general fund. If you remember, in two thousand sixteen, we were down around six percent of the water fund was going to the general fund. We had to bump that up to ten percent, which is our maximum allowable limit. So that changed the number to the twenty-eight. So basically, in FY sixteen, we sent twelve million dollars from water to general fund. And FY seventeen, we sent twenty-one. So that again is, that is your major variance that you see to date. But I do want to caution you that you'll see a major change in the depreciation number next month as we populate those numbers for the, for October through April. With that being said, Water Fund has been a very strong performing fund. And I know we have a rating call early next month, so we hope to confirm the triple A rating for the Water Fund as well. And I do want to just circle back to the general fund. We had our rating calls for those. We were confirmed by all three rating agencies as triple A rated with the only, only comment being that our revenues were not increasing at the same rate as our expenditures. So that was something to kind of keep in mind, but we did receive an overall triple A rating. All right, that sums up what we got today.
I need you to go back to the, the slide had the amended programs.
Yes, sir, you want the FY17 proposed?
There you go, that's right. Okay, right there, what says M H B A?
That is our, which one?
Restore M H B A to pre-recession levels.
Oh, sorry, that is Mabel House, Barnes and Theater, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
What I don't see, I don't see, I know the D A applied for some new positions, I don't see that on here.
Yeah, this is, this is not personnel. Yeah, this is, this is not personnel necessarily. We do have sheriff incentive pay and a few personnel items, but these were the big ticket items. The only one that was added outside of the original list that was sent out was the Naco membership, because that was a, a discussion that we had earlier in the month.
Right, but, but the, the D A was five people. That's got to be five hundred thousand dollars, or close.
We, I can, I can look back into the requests and then get you that information.
Yeah, we need to, because I don't want to have that, I don't want to have Vic yelling at me that I'm ignoring him.
Absolutely, sir.
He can hurt me.
I understand.
Request from this budget.
Yes, right. They came in asking for five more positions, right?
I, I was going to say, I thought we funded one or one position, two positions during the adoption.
Yeah.
Oh, during the adoption, right, but this is, this is new.
Yeah, and again, this is from the adoption process. The only thing that is added after the adoption process was the Naco membership. So these are items that we were considering, or the board was considering through the F Y seventeen adoption. There's been additional items that have been brought forward for consideration.
Right.
But I did not include those on this list, sir.
Okay.
These are proposed, correct?
Right, proposed, right.
Yes, these were proposed in the seventeen.
So we're proposing a consultant for seven hundred thousand dollars?
These were just options to consider, so there's no, it was just, um, the, these were basically items that either there was an interest from the board, or the board had support on, one or, one or two board members had support on these specific items. So, but, and all of these were requested through the department's F Y seventeen adoption process.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we did have some priorities that we addressed when we passed the contingency budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I know that Commissioner Cupid and I were sponsoring a couple of, of the same ones, um, but I, I don't remember that. Well, I don't know, I don't remember that being a priority, but it may be, I don't know. I just, very good presentation, very detailed and thorough, and I appreciate you meeting with us individually to go over it prior to today. The only suggestion I have is where you have total revenues across the top. Um, we're all about pop-up colors, but I wouldn't have revenues in red.
Gotcha. We, we can make that change.
They need to be black.
We, we can do that.
Or blue.
Let's see if I can find one. Find one here for you. Yes, ma'am. We will, we will find a, a better color for that.
All right, so here, here's, let me see if I can put this in layman's terms. We know, like, for instance, let me, let me, no, that's not true. We know, for instance, the bus, the transit, all right? Go to that slide.
Yes, sir.
All right, so let's say that we stay on track, and we only have to transfer, for the first six months, we spent six point seven million dollars, right? Actual.
Uh, se- seven point, seven point one.
Okay, seven point one million dollars.
Yep.
But we've budgeted how much?
The budget is twenty million.
All right, so let's say that, you know, the creek don't rise, and we stay on this track, and we only spend fifteen million dollars, all right? And so that means we have five million dollars left over to play with, all right? But, and this is General Fund money.
And you're exactly right. If we don't, if there's not a cash need in Transit, we do not send the General Fund subsidy.
Okay, so let's say that everything else, go back to the, the parking garage. All right, so the parking deck, um, we're going to owe them.
We, we've already said it.
We budgeted one point one million dollars, okay?
Yes, sir.
Right? And that's what we, that's what we're going to project, we're going to spend for the rest of the year, right?
Yes, sir.
And that, does that include the revenue generated? Is there any offset to that from the gen, revenue generated from what Steve collects there at the booth?
Yeah, that's all, any revenue collected at the booth is in there as well.
That's all, that's all, that means everything, okay.
There's about three hundred thousand of that, one million dollars is from the General Fund. The rest is generated specifically from the parking deck.
Okay, so let's say we have five million dollars left over from the bus, from Transit.
Sure.
My question out to the board is, how do you want to spend that? All right? And then you go back to the famous.
Right.
Go back to the amended slide, all right?
And if.
And everything, everything, whoops, you went too far.
One more.
There you go.
There you go.
Everything that, that the commissioners want, plus the elected, and you don't have to hide back there anymore, huh? All right? All the constitutional officers, like the D A, these should all be on a sheet.
Sure.
All right? And then it's up to the board to wrestle with how they want to spend that money, if, if it's available, okay? What I'm saying is, is that I always like to have, in my bottom right-hand drawer at the end of the fiscal year, we know we're going to have leftover money, so how are we going to spend that money so we execute it on time? All right? And what I want the board to know is, to wrestle with, okay, if we have that five million dollars, or whatever amount you think we're going to have, all right? How are we going to spend that money? And that's what I want the board to be, to be discussing with each other here, as, you know, as they go down and walk the halls with each other, because clearly, I only want one thing, all right? We all know what that is, because we briefed this afternoon, not all of that, of course, but the rest of it is between the other four commissioners, is how they're going to portion that money based on the discussions with each other. And that's the difference this time, is that I'm allowing you to play with that five million dollars, but you all have to play nice with each other to do that.
Well, go to the next slide.
I, I just want to, before, I just want to make a quick comment.
You're not, you're not going to dilute what I just said, are you?
I, I'm sorry. I might.
I was so close.
You were so close. The, the key here that I want to point out is if there is savings in the Transit Fund or the Parking Deck Fund, or whatever fund that would be that would impact the General Fund, the plan here is, please remember that when we adopt the budget, we should generate no dollars. By adding these items, that shows that we are going to exceed the budget that we have adopted.
But that's my thing, all right? What I'm telling you, this time is different.
Yes.
You have a great plan, but, but I sign the budget.
Yes, sir.
All right? And we write the budget right here, working with you as a partnership.
Absolutely.
All these items should be given to the, to the commissioners.
Absolutely.
So they can start looking at, for instance, I have no problem with a two million dollar vehicle replacement, all right? I really don't. I have seen how, how we are hurting in that regard, okay? But I'm just one vote, and what I am is I just consider myself the referee among this fight. So we need to let the commissioners, you working with the commissioners, all right? Give them the total sheet of what it is that the shortfalls are, the unfunded liabilities, and then we come to an agreement, all right? You're working through your office and the county manager of how we want to spend any projected, uh, shirt, uh, projected, uh, excess we might have.
Yes, sir.
And I understand the county manager is going to push real hard that we fund every one of these two million dollar vehicle replacement and the accountable, I get that part, but he's got a, he's got a voice in this, okay? But the new part of this element is, so does the board now.
Right.
But we're doing this in April, and we're not doing it in August and September.
Yes, and I, I agree with you. We'll, we'll provide that list, and we'll get the commissioners' input on their prioritization. So we, we are on board with that a hundred percent. What I was just alluding to, though, is that there's that five million saving.
I get you.
It's going to reduce the amount.
I, I hear you. I hear, what I'm saying now is, is I want the commissioners more involved in this chart.
Yes, sir.
Plus, I'm adding the other chart, because I have to also answer the constitutional officers.
Yes, sir.
All right? I don't want them to feel like they're the Lone Ranger, or the Lone Ranger-ette.
Sure.
Uh, I have to be able to answer them when I show them, th- these are my cards.
Sure.
This is what I think we're going to have to spend at the end of the year, and I want you to know you're in the mix, but you now have to do your part, all right? You have to go to the commissioners and to the county manager and say, okay, look, I want to be, this is what I'd like you to do. So I know I have five people who want to talk, so I'll start with Mr. Hankerson first.
I, I would say, Mr. Chairman, and I love that approach, but what we got to look at now, vehicle replacement and capital and accountable, we can cut off his one-time monies. So depending on what the board asks, it's got to be reoccurring revenue.
I get that.
Okay.
Right, I understand that. And I'm all for, once you're in, then you're in, all right? There's not, you're not a little bit pregnant, you're totally, all right? So once you commit to a program, then you're all, that involves a recurring cost on an annual basis.
That'd be the understanding that those added, you'll do whatever you need to do the next year and the revenue source to do.
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay, so I'll start with Commissioner Otte.
Okay, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but the five million dollars you're talking about.
It was an example.
No, no, but I mean, the, if it's, if it's not recurring revenue, then you shouldn't be putting that money towards recurring expenses.
I know we're going to be drawing in more money, because I can see the future. I've done a Vulcan mine mill, all right?
So you're going to write that check?
I'm confident that we are going to be generating more revenue, all right?
I just, in my mind, I think we have to be really careful, I mean.
Absolutely right.
If, if it's, uh, you know, for example, restoring library hours, okay? Um, I think that, yeah, that, once you restore them, you can't the next year say, oh, we don't have the money, we're going to cut them back.
I, I get that part, but we also understand what the priorities are, okay? And the priorities are tied to the strategic plan, which we have, by the way, okay? So we should be, every, all of this is part of what Mr. Volkman and the county manager are saying. I get what you're saying, Commissioner, but I want you to be aware of the fact that A, that the chairman has told me that this has to be connected to the strategic plan, and B, it's got to be, if we're going to do it, it's going to be a recurring cost. So how do we, how does this look for two thousand nineteen, okay? So for instance, let's say that, I'm fairly confident that the tax digest in two thousand nineteen will once again be a six million, six percent, okay? Or five point four, whatever.
Okay.
So let's say, let's say that as an assumption.
Sure.
Okay? And I think that's a reasonable assumption, because I really believe in my heart that the economic growth of this county is going to be significant spurred by Battery Park and, uh, uh, the Braves Stadium, and also what the two C I, three C, four C I Ds are doing, okay? I really believe that's going to happen. So I'm not saying we're going to have a fifteen percent increase in revenue. I'm taking a conservative approach, which is what everybody does. So I'm just saying that that's what the parameters Mr. Volkman has to work within, and when you come to him, he's got those guidelines to work you through those.
But didn't we, I mean, my understanding, when we had our briefing before, that the digest increase has been projected to be five point nine percent, and this budget assumes a five point four percent increase in the digest? So that increase in digest is already factored into the budget.
I, I get that part, but again, we still are going to have, all right? We, we know we're going to have additional funds, all right? We have the county staff that has emergent requirements, but the commissioners also have their favorite projects.
Right, but I, but I think that a priority should be given to, I think, like the county manager was saying, capital expenditures, you talked about your hundred and seventy-two thousand mile SUV or whatever at the airport. I mean, you know, Parks and Rec and, and D O T and all that, they have equipment that is like, ready to fall apart. If we have one-time money left over, it ought to go to that instead of first going to recurring expenses.
That's the conversation that I'm allowing you all to have now, all right? That's, that's, that's the wrestling match. You know, I mean, you are going to have to all play nice with each other and figure out how to do this. Otherwise, you're going to make me do it, all right? And then you're all, then, then you're going to have one person unhappy with, and that's fine, okay? But I'm giving you the chance now to take your projects, get with the county manager, you know, with Mr. Volkman as the, as a technical advisor, and try to find a way to, to, to address both recurrent costs and one-time. And we have four months to do it in, right? Basically? Because when do we really start getting down to nitty-gritty for the two thousand eighteen budget? August?
Uh, we, public hearings should begin in August. We, we will adopt, first meeting in September, but.
Right.
We will start having very serious conversations in June.
Yeah, but by that time, we have a pretty good idea, because the commissioner's been working with you, Mr. Mr. Hankerson and our new county manager, as to how we're going to spend this. And eventually, it's going to come to a like, okay, I'm going to have to break the tie. I get that part. But right now, I want them to help you decide how we're going to spend the section money. Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. Um, we also need to keep in mind that we have these proposed budget amendments from last year that didn't go through, that we're carrying over.
Right.
That are priorities. We have the, the ones we've already approved that are going to impact next year's budget. The seventeen B O C approvals with F Y eighteen impact, that's a whole nother list of two point seven million. And then we have our, um, other priorities, other things that we, we talked about adding to.
Right, right. And, and we're using the proposed eighteen budget as a starting place, and that's when we'll be used as a basis to begin those conversations.
I mean, for these.
The advantage is now, you're seeing these in April, you're not seeing them in August and September. You're going to have three extra months, four extra months to look at this and decide, all right? Think about this, and then I'm sure there will be some sort of self-generating momentum where you're going to start getting to decide how you want it, because he's going to have, Mr., you know, he's going to have, all you're going to have a timeline, muscles, we have to start doing things to put, to finalize the two thousand eighteen budget. And we're not waiting until August to do that this time. We're not.
And one other question on the Parking Deck Fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we looking into privatizing that and letting a.
It's looking.
Outside company run it?
We're, I believe they, what they're doing is that the county would still be in control of the parking deck, but we're looking at different options, whether it's service, automation, fee structure, when we charge, when we don't charge, things of that nature. But the committee will be looking at a variety of options that they'll bring forward to the board, hopefully at a work session for discussion.
For next year's budget?
Yeah, it would not be, it wouldn't really have an impact in seventeen. By the time it got up and running and everything else, it'd be really more of an eighteen impact, but we plan to have those discussions in seventeen. So we have a good.
So we're already going to be in the hole this year.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, but that was, it was budgeted. Uh, we, we did, we did anticipate the General Fund needing to contribute three hundred thousand.
Well, that's what it's doing.
So that.
And the discussion will include private, privately operated as well.
I have, I have a question, just for clarification.
Yes.
So if, if the, the chairman's hypothetical five million dollars shows up, um, you have to take from that the two point seven for the, the list that Commissioner Burrow talked about, of the things that were, and I don't remember what chart it is.
Next, next slide right there.
Right, all right, so the next slide. So if you have the chairman's five million dollars, yeah, you have to take this two point seven away from that, so you only really have two point three to play with.
Well, the idea is, again, the two point seven is recurring costs that we would have to look at, at an ongoing basis, and like you stated, Commissioner, the five million And like you stated, Commissioner, the five million would be a one-time, one-time available funds. So those would be from, in our mind, possibly considered two different.
Right, but you don't want to all of a sudden take on additional five million dollars of recurring expenses, because you have two point seven, that's already over the seventeen budget.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, if we added an additional five million dollars of recurring costs, it would be the five million plus the two point seven.
Right, you made seven point seven.
And that's, and that's Bill's responsibility, is that when you come up with a proposition, you say, that's great, but remember that's a recurring cost, all right?
Well, I'm just bringing it up because, I mean, we're talking, we're throwing a bunch of numbers around in it, but we've got, it's kind of like we've got this two point seven already hanging out there.
Well, I'm, I'm really glad you're really excited about this, all right? So am I, uh, I really am excited about this. But this is just a new way of doing things, but I just want to emphasize that you now have, you now have all the facts, all right? And I know you have your projects, and believe it or not, I'm probably the third vote on some of them, because I know what they are. But I'm just giving you four extra months to find a way, you know, to horse trade about how we're gonna do this. Well, Bill says, look, we can't do that, because if you do that, then we break the two thousand eighteen budget, all right? So as much as I love to do that, you need to go talk to the chairman about doing this in two thousand nineteen. So, uh, he'll be the one that gives, provides the technical advice about what we can or can't do from a technical perspective. But these really are your projects, okay? And here's your opportunity to engage Mr. Hankerson, the new county manager, and Bill over the next three to four months, so that when we, when we sit down in, uh, in August to start finalizing the budget with the public hearings, pretty much, we're just going, it's a pro forma, because you've already talked about it, and you know what's gonna go in there, and we may have to vote on some of them, I, I understand that. But by then, ninety percent of what we're trying to do in two thousand eighteen should be already accomplished, because you've all talked to each other, you know what we can or can't do.
Right, and we do have some major milestones coming up that will impact us for eighteen. I mean, we know we'll take our payroll snapshot after the pain class, so we'll get a forecast of what that'll look like.
Right.
We'll also be able to, once you guys, once the board votes on the, the millage for this year, we'll use that as a basis for eighteen, assuming that's the direction. So those are two big milestones that we'll have coming up, and the final one will be to getting our final increases on what our, you know, medical and dental insurance and things of that nature would be. But those are a lot of the things that we don't have a lot of control over, but that'll give us a very good picture of how we move into eighteen.
Okay, and the beauty part is in two thousand nineteen, you know, the cap is released on the, on the millage rate increase. So then we gotta find out what we can politically accept as a board, all right? And as elected officials and political figures. But the bottom line is, I've already, I've openly stated on many forums and in the paper that, you know, at a minimum, I will raise the millage rate to, to, to sustain the pay study and to, to increase it. All right, we, enough of this, you know, making public safety an unpriority and taking care of our people, and then we don't follow through with actions. We, I am committed to writing, to writing a budget in conjunction with the board and playing the political price to raise the millage rate to take our public safety out of this low-income area and start paying them the compensation that they have earned and deserved to take care of this great county. I keep telling everybody, quality is not cheap, and we have been paying our people on the cheap for too long. And while I'm the chairman of the board, I, we're gonna stop that. So, uh, two thousand nineteen is gonna be a whole new year, and, uh, what we can't get done in two thousand eighteen, at least we know in two thousand nineteen, we'll be able to, to, to address those and perhaps fund them based on what other requirements are. But I think I've been very, very clear about what's important in my world, and taking care of our people is nine, our number one priority, and that includes public safety and all the other fine members of the county staff. So, uh, with that, you have any other questions?
I just wanted to, um, provide full disclosure to the board about the new item that's on that list for the, um, BOC items. The NACO item, yeah.
Oh.
I was recently nominated for a leadership program and didn't know that we were no longer members of NACO. And so I was provided some correspondence from them, and they said that we would have to reactivate our membership. The program, I believe, is in June, and so it, time is of the essence to respond and renew that. I would love to have your support, but I, I just think it's good, just like we're a member of ACCG, there's some benefits to being a member of, of a national organization too, inclusive of some of the purchasing benefits that come from that. But time is of the essence with that, um, for its prioritization. So if it can be prioritized by June, I'd appreciate it, but if it's beyond June, it could just be considered in August.
I, I think we've, I mean, we just need to see what the benefits are, I think the reason it was canceled was, um, no one could tell us what the benefit was of being in it, so.
There was no discussion, I mean, again, I, I was under the impression, as I believe some others were, that we were always members, so I don't even know, even that discussion around benefits, that discussion never was had with the full board.
Okay, well, we can, you brought it out, and now we've just got to find out once again what the benefits are, so the board can decide, you know, whether or not we want to assist, support this or not. So she, it's an issue, it's on the, it's on the sheet.
I just want to let them know how it's looked on, because that wasn't part of our initial, um, budget.
But it's back on the sheet now, so we know it's out there, again, um, and we'll have to, it's one of the many items.
Sir, just to, just to add to that, we've had some conversations with NACO to add it onto the list, and part of that, I believe we got a pretty good, uh, email chain with some benefits, so I'll be happy to send that out to the commissioner.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Please.
And just as a starting point, if there's additional information, we, you can work through us if you'd like, or directly to NACO, whichever you prefer.
Okay.
Bill, would you also, we've been a member of NACO for a number of years, but this past year, there were some assumptions that we didn't renew, it wasn't that we didn't renew, it was decided to delay till a new board come on board. If you would explain that, after I did the research.
Yes, we, we've done a, we have been ma, members of NACO for, for a long time, and I know under Chairman Lee, our membership dues came, our invoice came in for the, the dues to be paid for FY seventeen. Those were deferred until, uh, the new chairman came into office, and then we were gonna make an overall decision of how to move forward. But, but again, I can provide you the benefits, information that I've received as, uh, just for informational purposes.
Provide them all to the board, we'll be good.
Yes, sir, will do.
Thank you, Bill, great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the board? If not, uh, call us into, uh, into German here, till tomorrow night. Thank you.